Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Meeting Wednesday, November 12th at 7:00 PM. Stay up for pledge ladies.
............................................................................................. Thank you. Item 1B.
Presentation of the CPACE program and agreement between Connecticut Green Bank to participate in Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. Thank you, and good evening, City Council. I'm sorry that the visuals didn't work. We had tried to get our PowerPoint loaded up, but I'm just going to sort of talk through the program with you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I've had the chance to meet a couple of you over the year, and we look forward to bringing this to the council for what we hope will be a partnership going forward. I am joining you from the state's Green Bank, the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority, known as the Connecticut Green Bank, is a quasi-state agency that is designated by statute as the administrator of the PACE program. PACE financing was enabled in Connecticut by statute that was passed in June of 2012. The statute essentially says that energy upgrades in the state of Connecticut are a public benefit, and so the state is allowed to use the public benefit assessment collection mechanism to finance an energy improvement. In this statute, the policy said that any municipality who wants to offer this type of financing to their building owners needs to do so by joining through a legal agreement a partnership with the state agency. So that's really what we're talking about here today. PACE financing works like this. The Green Bank, where I work, provides 100% upfront financing to a building owner to undertake clean energy improvements to their property. These are energy improvements, they can be solar panels, they can be new equipment like HVAC or windows or lighting, any improvement that they're going to do to improve their building, to improve the energy of their building. That capital that is advanced to the building owner is secured by a tax lien that is put on the property by the city, that is, the participating city in the program. That tax lien then secures the financing, and the building owner pays back that financing over a 20-year period, which really allows them to cash flow positive from the very beginning of the energy project. So the reason we have this in place in Connecticut is really to solve the number-one barrier that we have to energy upgrades in the state, which is that there isn't very attractive upfront financing for many commercial properties to undertake these measures. So if you go to a bank to get financing, the terms are quite limited. So our ability to spread the payback over 20 years allows the savings from the energy project to offset whatever the debt service would be on the assessments that's going on. So in the short history of the program, we've been around for about two years, a little bit less than that, we have 100 towns that have joined the program, representing about 88% of eligible commercial properties. So most of the state is now in partnership on this. We have done $50 million worth of transactions throughout the state, the mix of all sorts of buildings, commercial, retail, industrial, multifamily, nonprofits. Our deal sizes range from a $30,000 boiler upgrade in a Baptist church in Bridgeport to a $4 million fuel cell in New Britain. So we're really financing across the range. The nice thing about Connecticut is that this is a way for private capital to come into our state. So although we are the enabling agency to administer the program here in Connecticut, we do so by using this structure to bring in private capital. So what we're here to request from you today is your consideration to join with the Clean Energy Finance Investment Authority, the Connecticut Green Bank, in a partnership that would allow us to finance projects in Bristol. We have a couple of building owners that have expressed interest in this, and we think that it would be a very great economic development tool for the city.
Can we just have your name and your half for directions?
Sure, it's Jessica Bailey, and I'm the director of the CNI programs of Green Bank.
The reason, just real quickly for the council, the reason they are here today is because we had, as she said, a number of large employers, three of them are Tice, Crowley, Audemars, and Bristol Hospital are interested in this program. We do have Peter Gersky from Tice here, and I have the president, what's your...
President and CEO.
President and CEO of Tice, who is going to speak as well. But right now, any questions before Peter gets up?
I have contact.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. My first question is, you mentioned this being available to commercial buildings. Is it also available to what we'd call nonprofits?
Yeah.
Or do they have to be for profit?
It doesn't, it really leave it up to the city. The interesting thing about a nonprofit, of course, is that they don't get a tax bill, which is what they repay this assessment on. So we've done nonprofits across the state, and we really just ask the tax collector if they're willing to send a nonprofit a tax bill that would just have this assessment on it, and in most cases, the tax collector says that's no problem, so we can hopefully finance it.
And that brings me to my next question. Is this an additional responsibility for our tax collector or our assessor's offices?
It is, and we've had some conversations with the town on this front, that any costs that are incurred by the town are covered through the legal agreement that we join into. So if there's a software upgrade that the tax collector would like, we pay for that with the Green Bank. We pay $500 a year, that's in the agreement as well, just to cover kind of administrative costs. In only the cases of the 100 towns that have come on board, I don't think there's any town that would say that the costs they're putting into this haven't been covered. And of course, there's the economic development benefit to the town for having this offered. So, thank you.
Just, thank you, for just for the council. We had CPACE in my office with our tax collector, I think Rob, you were there, assessor, water department was there, so we really vetted this out. Well, why don't we ask Peter to come up and talk what it'll do to your, to Tice, and why you're so interested in this, just to give the council an idea of what this program's all about.
May I just offer one comment? I just wanted to thank the water department, the water board, for their assistance in this, because in the, for this program, the water department had to give up its basic pecking order on collections, making CPACE the primary collector after city, then federal state city. Thank you.
Peter?
Sure. My name's Peter Gersky, I'm the president and CFO at Tice Precision Steel down on 300 Broad Street. We now, when we purchased the company back in January, we had 74 employees, we now have 102. And we have gone through and actually been approved for a CPACE project which, by the utility company, where we were selected, where we could put in solar panels for a project that's $4 million, which allow us to put solar panels on our property, and our property itself, we own about 32 acres. And so this would allow us to generate savings over the course of time, about a quarter of a million dollars a year. Tice uses over a million dollars a year of electricity. The state of Connecticut is ranked almost last in utility expenses and cost, which makes it difficult for us to compete. So this type of a program gives us an ability to compete, I just came back from China on Saturday, with global companies. We were doing business now in Romania, China, all across the world, and this allows us to be more cost-effective and be able to compete and to be able to grow the business. So this is really where we firmly believe that the CPACE program, with the financing structure it offers us, allows us to make this investment to be more competitive.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? Let me say, I commend you on the work you've done with Tice. I mean, you've turned a company that was really on the brink of closing their doors, literally, and to bring up that many employees. And our commitment to you, when we met, I think you were in the job for a week when we had the water break, we met in my office, and I committed to you that the city is here to help you, and I commend you on your growth.
And I would also like to appreciate the water board, and I know that they had a subordinate position and some issues there, but they really, you know, spent a lot of time understanding the process, and I think they really recognize the value it can bring to the companies and the community, so I'd like to thank them as well.
And I agree, Rob, great job with the water board in educating everyone. Any questions? Where the motion? Okay, where the motion is? There's a motion, I don't care if you move.
I can read that.
Clear.
I move that the city of Bristol entered into an agreement with the Connecticut Green Bank to participate in the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE program, and that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute this agreement on behalf of the city of Bristol. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council for its review.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item number two.
Approve of minutes of regular city council meeting on October 14th, 2014, and the special city council meeting on September 16th, 2014.
Second. Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That's number three.
Public participation.
Bill Stortz.
Bill Stortz, 301 Osgo Drive, a couple items. I've noticed that the city no longer seems to be flying this, the city of Bristol flag to city buildings, city hall being one of them. State flag is flown, American flag, not a Bristol flag. If we want to market and promote Bristol, that ought to be one of the small things. Is there any reason why the flag is no longer being flown?
I don't know, find out the world.
Okay. Someone look into it, please?
I'll look into it.
Yeah. Second item is, a main street across from the chamber, the American flag is torn, tattered, in deplorable condition, should be replaced.
Where is it?
Across the street from Chamber.
Is it a city flag?
It's an American flag. I think it's a city flag, but if not...
It's not a private flag? I guess we're trying to...
No, it's not under a poll, the light polls.
All right. Okay, we'll just step around.
And the third thing deals with American flags also, it was just very ironic that on this past weekend, we, I had a lot of veterans activities, and veterans, veterans there yesterday, but just last week, all the American flags on Route 6 and a few other streets were taken down. Timing couldn't have been worse. Is there any reason, any explanation for that?
Not a city, that's not a city task.
No.
That someone private who volunteered their time to do it.
We didn't look good.
No, that's not a city, that's not a city thing.
The city didn't look good.
Evening. I brought a prop with me tonight, and I wanted to talk tonight about the fast track coming to Bristol. This is not an exact eximile of a map from the fast track, from the CD Fast Track website, but you can plainly see that from Hartford through New Britain, there's two lines coming to Bristol. The proposed parking spot right here, I believe is Depot Square, right?
No. We met with them, they want to use it, and we're looking at other alternatives, so no.
That would be good.
You have too much time on your hands if you're driving.
My daughter helped me with it. What, actually, what I wanted to, I wanted to illustrate, actually, the fact that these urban centers that we're going to be connected to, wherever this is, in the downtown or somewhere near the downtown, all have much higher crime rates than Bristol does. Even if you compare the population between Bristol and New Britain, and the mill rates, actually, you've got the mill rate of Bristol in 2012 at 34.81, but if you look at New Britain, it's at 49. The density is higher, all the crime rates are higher. I mean, at least double on violent crime, assault, robbery, property crime is almost double, burglary is double, and larceny is not quite double. And then, if you look at Hartford's crime rates, which, by the way, their mill rate is 74.29 in this urban center with transit, you can see that it rises exponentially. Violent crime rates on murder in Bristol with a population of 60,000 versus Hartford with a population of 125,000, 16 times higher. Assault, 30 times higher. Robbery, over 10 times higher, and so on and so forth. I mean, if you look at the FBI statistics from 2012, and you look at the urban centers in the state of Connecticut, regardless of the, anything in the same population range, so there's 11 cities that I put together in this group, and I didn't bring the information, I was going to hand it to you all, but there's 11 cities with almost the same population as Bristol. The cities with the higher mill rates and with the more density and that have access to transit all have higher crime rates. All the cities that have lower taxation and have a larger median household income all have lower crime rates. So as we move forward in the development of downtown Bristol, I think we should be really careful when we consider increasing the density in the downtown. We don't really have any control over who's going to occupy any new apartments in the downtown. We can market it all we want to, but the state of Connecticut wants to give transportation access to low-income people in the state. So as they do that, the median income in Bristol is going to continue to go down. Obviously, tax rates are going to start to increase on the flip side of that. And I don't know, would you call that the New Britain Bristol planning region?
The... I don't know.
The transportation, housing, regional plan thing? So I mean, we're, that's what we're talking about here, and that's the change that's in the ordinance tonight. Are we leaving the council of governments of Central Arctic Valley temporarily, or are we working just on one project with the New Britain planning region?
We are now with the Arctic Valley CAC, that's where we are.
Okay. So what's the change in the ordinance about the New Britain Bristol planning region for tonight's agenda?
Just to leave, leave the existing and move to the new planning, planning region.
To move to the council of governments of Central Arctic Valley?
Yes, Arctic Valley.
Okay. And funding for the downtown projects going to be coming through that council of governments?
We never said we're getting funding for the downtown project with that. There's no ask for the state or anything for that, that's up to Renaissance. We are not...
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, so it's up to Renaissance?
It's up to Renaissance. We have nothing to do with that project right now.
What about the citizens of Bristol? I mean, if we're going to move forward with that, Renaissance, you know, sold us on shopping on downtown, and now we're talking about public debt, we're talking about building density, and we're talking about apartments. Is the public going to get a chance to vote whether or not they're on board with this project, now that it's something entirely different than it was in the beginning when you solicited public input? Because a lot of people, they didn't, I'm sorry to interrupt, but a lot of people, they didn't participate because they weren't concerned about what was going to be built in the downtown because they just wanted to see something built, and they figured it's not taxpayer money. But now that it's taxpayer money, I'd really like to see a referendum or something.
BDDC has meetings monthly, that's where you would talk. Once they have an actual plan with funding, the BDDC will vote on it, and will come to the city council, be able to speak again here, so you have two shots at it. Now, the referendum, I will push if we come with taxpayer dollars to build the buildings, but we haven't even got close to that for yet.
What if the infrastructure's up to $6 million? Isn't that going to be like, kind of, six, a one and a half dozen?
Well, the infrastructure's not above that $6 million. Not even close to that.
So no smart growth retrofitting on the sewers?
As of right now, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I can't tell you, but we're not even close to $6 million in numbers.
Could we find out from an engineer? Who would I contact for?
I'd have to go out, of course.
All right, thank you.
I'm not even sure if that engineering has been designed yet to fit that. I don't think it has, I mean...
I know it's very costly to...
Yeah, I don't think it's even been, gotten that far yet as far as design of the engineering.
I just say to get the ball rolling before we know what we're getting into...
I agree, and that's why we're doing our due diligence.
I think, thank you.
Thank you. So we have the fellow's participation, now, starting with my friend.
Yes, I do have one there. We are coming up on the Charity Cycling Challenge, which is a local nonprofit. This year, they're having a bowling event locally, and one of the best beneficiaries is youth and community services. So I wanted to see if there was any interest from our city departments and also our elected officials to get a bowling team, so we can support that effort. Charity Cycling also has a charity cycling event, which is going to be held at the New Boys and Girls Club on March 28th, at which time our own city departments or other teams can form, and you can designate your own charity. So if there's a certain department that is doing something for wellness and/or has a special cause that they raise money for on their own, you could get involved with that. But it's a great way to augment the efforts that our community and community services department is doing, especially in terms of the added burden with code enforcement and helping with donations to go to families that need it.
Councilwoman Edward, can you email the departments and just, you know, if anyone wants to get together?
Yes, I can do that. I don't think I have enough flyers for everyone, but I'll pass these out to everyone up here, and I'll get everything to your office for the Facebook page, too.
We've got a lot of time for this. March, March 28th.
Bowling's November 23rd.
Is there anything else?
No.
No, okay. Councilman? No.
No, I just wanted to congratulate Representatives Frank McCaslin with that's for being re-elected, and for Karen Patton for winning her seat, also to Henry Martin for winning the senate seat. I do want to thank Chris Wright, even though I disagree with him on a number of items. I do want to thank him for the time that he spent as a state representative. I know he took on a tough job and did his best for the people as he thought he would do.
Councilman?
Yes, two items. The first one is that the enrollment period for the Access Health CT, the Affordable Care Act, is starting up again this week, November 15th. So for folks who have lost insurance this year, perhaps, I think of young people that age out of their parents' policies, the open enrollment period is starting again, so I just want to remind people of that and encourage them that there's lots of ways to sign up besides the internet and phone calls. There is a storefront office in New Britain if people want to go and ask questions.
I just briefly want to share what a great time I've had on the past couple of weekends, getting to participate in some of what's been going on at Memorial Boulevard School, the cleanup and events celebrating Veterans Day leading up to last night. And I want to really give great kudos to Councilwoman Ellen Zappo-Sassu, Memorial Boulevard Task Force, and all of the people from all over the community, people that live near the school, people that live way out in Aragonized District, that maybe don't have much of a reason to travel down there all the time, but are just so committed to the idea of seeing that building succeed and stay as part of an integral piece of our community that they've been moved to help out down there. And that's a great credit to our city, and it's a great credit to the work that the task force is doing, and to everyone involved, I say thank you, and kudos to the chair.
Can I just add to that? I want to say that as a member of the Bristol Coral Society, it was nice to go there on that stage and sing out to an almost full house. It was a, it was a well-attended event, very well.
And I will add to that also. I also commend Councilwoman Zappo for a great job organizing the cleanup. I was there, I was there in person, but not cleaning, I had just had surgery on my arm, but my son was there, working for me, if you will, and it was a great opportunity for people, so a great job to the council for your organizational skills it showed, as well as a great weekend that you put together, great job. And now we'll move on to item number five.
That's committee reports, and the first committee report is actually going off. I believe the real estate committee is going to be rewriting that.
Okay, so no motion out of the agenda? Okay, and do we need a motion to take that out, or just a... Any other committee reports on my left?
Yes, two quick ones, Your Honor. First one from Parks and Rec. Renovations to Muzzy Field are complete. The leaf pickup operations are moving along. All the parks have had leaves picked up and are now going back to the parks to finish the operation. Muzzy Field will be closing out the football season, as everybody knows, I'm sure, the Thanksgiving Day game, which will be exciting, I hope to see you all there. The American flags along Veterans Memorial Boulevard will be removed for the season after December 7th, and will be put back up the first week of April 2015. There has been a new aquatic supervisor hired, whose name is Jamie Castro, so congratulations to Jamie. And the Parks Department is also currently taking registration for winter youth programs. Classes are set to start the first week of December, next Saturday. The Parks Department will be hosting the 17th Annual Turkey Shoot at Chippensoe Middle School. The event is free for all Bristol U's 8 to 13, so that's next Saturday. So that's it from the Parks Department. And also, to keep everyone apprised of some of the interesting things we heard a little bit sort of earlier tonight, but the city has a lot of interesting things going on in terms of energy and energy efficiency. The mayor's task force on energy consumption has been working for quite some time now on different projects. And one of the things that we've recently undertaken was looking at whether or not it makes sense for the city to maybe look at the creation of an energy manager position to help us manage some energy cost-saving projects, identify cost savings, and help to make the city more energy efficient. So the mayor's task force on energy consumption has come up with some highlights, some things that an energy manager could do if the city had one, that might make sense to get this done sooner rather than later. An energy manager might be able to be the point of contact for the Energy Savings Performance Contract, this large citywide project, this is a significant investment that deserves proper attention, that's how the task force felt. An energy manager could spend a large percentage of their time working with the contractor to execute this project and then follow up on energy uses and savings. Another thing with city building renovations coming down the pipeline in the near future, a city man, excuse me, an energy manager could help the city to identify and take advantage of energy savings rebates. When it comes to some of these new projects, being able to save money from an energy standpoint is healthy for the city financially, fiscally responsible. And it was the opinion of the full task force unanimously, based on the research that we had done together, on this idea that if the city moves forward and creates this position of an energy manager and hires somebody, that it is more than likely that person will be able to identify well over the cost savings that would cover the city's cost of having that person on staff, that would cover the cost of having an energy manager. They'd be able to identify cost savings that would offset that completely. Other things, the streetlight management, now that the city has approved the purchase of the streetlights, an energy manager could help ensure that the proper next steps are followed, and that all lights are properly retrofitted into LED, and also measure the real cost savings. An energy manager could act as the liaison between the city, the Board of Education, the mayor's energy task force, the Department of Public Works, and all city boards. And they could work with the schools and with city department heads and city employees on education costs, excuse me, energy cost savings, education. Talk to us a little bit about ways that we can change our habits to be more energy efficient and save money for the city. So those are just some, just an overview of some highlights, some reasons why it might be good for the city to create this position and hire an energy manager sooner rather than later. So as a matter of the record, I'm going to read the following into tonight's record, and then I will move that this be referred to salary committee for any further action. The mayor's task force on energy consumption recommends the creation of a full-time energy manager position to report to the mayor and act as the city's appointed staff person to our task force. This new position became apparent as the benefits and responsibilities of the Energy Service Performance Contracting started to evolve. Attached you will find a job description outlining desired qualifications, experience, and potential responsibilities, a suggested starting salary range, and some considerations developed by the committee as to why we believe the city could benefit from having an energy manager sooner than later. We believe that this position will more than pay for itself if said energy manager works to identify cost savings and potential rebates. Similar positions are currently self-sustaining in a number of Connecticut communities and communities across the country. Additionally, the position will oversee energy consumption in all city of Bristol-operated organizations and facilities, including those of the Board of Education. The full task force unanimously approves and endorses this recommendation. Thank you for your consideration of this very important cost-saving position. Sincerely, Frank Stoski, the chairman of the mayor's task force on energy consumption, and myself. So I move that the position of an energy manager, or the creation of an energy manager, be referred to salary committee for further action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Let me just say that what you just did was great, but it was really an unnecessary step. I already received the request through, through the energy committee. My office is already working on this. We are currently analyzing this position. I am working with the personnel director as well as the purchasing director. I already received the request through the Energy Committee. My office is already working on this. We are currently analyzing this position. I am working with Personnel Director as well as the Purchasing Director, and also coordinating with the energy audit that is going on. So we're already way ahead of this motion, and it's already scheduled to be on the Salary Committee. So we could vote on the motion, but it's already happening. Any other discussion? It's already happening. Anyone, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. That's it for me, Your Honor.
None for me, thank you.
Councilman? Councilman?
I have two brief reports. The first one is, I'd like to just share with everyone some of our code enforcement highlights. We are out of the busy, busy season, but it's still very busy, and we have a lot of order and compliance issues, building zoning, health, police, fire, and water. Still have many cases that they're working on together. The properties of interest continue to be, at least in the last four to six weeks, centered in the Federal Hill, the West End, neighborhoods adjacent to downtown, and we did have a couple of outliers on Chippensoe Hill. I didn't know if, Mayor, you wanted to speak about the issues with Twenty-Two High Street, but that was a big issue this past month, which you can address.
You have a brief report, and you can go ahead.
Basically, for those of you who are following, some of our larger structures, this has been a property of interest across from the library for years. And at the eleventh hour, the owners of the structure have now stated that they're going to attempt compliance and restoration. So they've already done the roof, and they're committed to purchasing adjacent properties which are currently beginning the foreclosure process. So that will be an interesting development for that street, and it's been a long time coming.
Well, I will add, I believe they already have come to an agreement on the two houses next door, and that looks like it's definitely going to happen, tear it down and make the property live.
Okay. So that's a major development there. Our Housing Inspector out of Bristol Burlington Health District, which works closely with us, has been doing a lot of complaints, and to probably no one's surprise, many of the addresses that she's concentrating a lot of her time with, including refuse inspections, are clustered with the same landlord. Several of them are, again, falling behind with payments and are delinquent in several areas, and we have adopted a zero-tolerance policy with code enforcement with the approval of the mayor, so a lot of that is starting to move. And I think we're going to see some additional foreclosures as we continue to implement that policy. From a foreclosure standpoint, we continue to hold steady, as do many of the other cities in Central Connecticut, and over the last month, just for those of you who enjoyed data, we've had a hundred foreclosures begin, and by far this month, the majority of them actually are in the second council district with thirty-four, followed by the first council district with twenty-three, and the third council district, definitely due to the stellar representation on the city council, is that twenty. We have a meeting next Wednesday, so if anybody would like to join us or have properties of interest that you'd like us to check on, obviously, it's a complaint-driven process, and we will add those to our list. The other one, I know that Councilwoman Brown touched on it, but we did just wrap up our Memorial Boulevard show-and-tell, so to speak. We started the first with a cleanup, which attracted over a hundred and thirty people, ranging in age from ten, the youngest being my neighbor Fiona Gallagher, to three people who went there in the forties, who are now in their eighties, who came to clean as well. And that lasted about four hours. The Mayor and Marion Calvin were there, and it was amazing what can be accomplished after four hours. And that led into three very successful productions this past week. I'm not going to go into a lot of the details. Many of you were there, and I really appreciate the collaboration with all of the city departments who came together to pull this off. We have the Board of Ed working with us. We have Public Works, several divisions. The Fire Department was there constantly, police, and then the CERT team came. The Controller's Office is helping me sort all the money issues. The Mayor's Office and the Senior Center sold tickets. We had to consult Roger a couple of times. It's just been a great effort, and I think it does show what can happen when there is some good effort put into something. On Sunday, the talent was really unbelievable, but more importantly, on Saturday night, we had thought we had sold about two-hundred-and-sixty tickets, so we were hoping for a healthy walk-in, and what we got was seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight people that presented stuff. A good deal of them were veterans, and they brought family. It was intergenerational, and the performance was outstanding that the showcase of stars presented. And for them to pull together a show in that short amount of time with that level of talent really speaks well for what we have in this community. The Veterans Day Ceremony that the Bristol Veterans Council and American Legion produced again was just a very dynamic ceremony. It lasted an hour, but it was just jam-packed with emotion and heartfelt sentiment from everybody there. That attracted over two-hundred-and-fifty people, and I'm torn between whether the highlight was Mr. Archaki, who received his World War II Medal at the age of ninety-one and broke up and saw it on stage when he did, or the keynote speaker, who's a Bristol resident, Mike Sumagala, who just off the cuff spoke about what it meant to be there and what it means to live with that, and that was just a phenomenal address as well. You know, last night, there's really no words to talk about the performance. It was just beyond anything I'd ever anticipated from the Coral Society and Bristol Bros. and Lynden Ensemble. And if this is only a figment of what could possibly be there, I think it's something that will be just a phenomenal piece for our city. It's on the gateway of downtown, and it sits at the foot of the Veterans Memorial Boulevard, and I think that there's a lot of people who feel strongly that this building is a piece of our fabric, a piece of our history, but more importantly, from what's happened in the last three days, it's definitely the potential for being part of our future as well. So thank you for all that help, and I really look forward to having more of this discussion. From a logistics standpoint, I will say that this has validated what we're trying to do with Jome Roseane, because the issues that two of our task force members, Peter Del Mastro and Frank Stosky, in conjunction with Roger Rousseau, had pinpointed, which were code compliance, utility and mechanicals, and parking, those were the challenges for all three events. And we are so fortunate to have the CERT team, and we also had Bristol Central High School civics classes participate for their community service component, and we were literally walking people up and down the stairs and guarding the parking lots, and we had flashlights on Tuesday night, and it was just an excellent illustration of what can happen. And luckily, we had no incidents, other than one significantly leaking toilet and one trip with no injuries. So, thank you.
And I have nothing. So, unfinished business, starting my far right.
None.
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 I have none. New business, starting my far left.
None.
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 Chair has none. Resignations?
Here are none.
Here are none. Appointments. Commission for Disability, Commission for Persons with Disabilities to appoint Greg Klemig to replace Christopher Lappas, resigned, unexpired term, six to seventeen.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Renovations Committee, Engine Company Number Four, to appoint Acting Chief Mark Martin to replace John Posey, no term.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption, to appoint John Sistoli to replace Laura Finley, Conservation Development Member, resigned, no term. To appoint Jay Carrier to replace Art Ward, Board of Finance Member, resigned, no term. To appoint Chris McNeil to replace Kevin Fuller, Citizen-at-Large, Section Two-Dash-Nine, resignation, no term. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. City Historian to appoint Robert Montgomery, two-year term, to eleven sixteen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Youth Commission, to appoint Michaela Rose Millahome, I don't think I got that right, to replace Natalie Feliciano, under twenty-one, of age rep, resigned, unexpired term to twelve fifteen. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Town and City Clerk, to reappoint Teresa Pack, four-year term, to eleven fourteen eighteen.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Congratulations. Subregisters of vital statistics, appoint, to appoint Ronald and Christopher Duhem and Eric Grandios, Subregisters of vital statistics, for a term to eleven eighteen. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Number ten.
Recommendation to the Board of Park Commissioners to consider the purchase of Sabino's Restaurant on Park Street to provide additional parking at Rappel Park and Muzzy Field, and, Your Honor, just some suggestions you may want to refer to, Mr. Real Estate, the Planning Commission, Corporation Council.
I believe it's already been referred to there, but it came here, so I will ask the council, we have this on the agenda, and maybe you could speak to this if need be. The owner is anxious to sell the property, and in the interest of time and expediency, I thought maybe as a council, we could decide if we're interested in this or not, give Ed the approval to start negotiations, as well as send it to zoning and planning for their review and for the exception.
Eight twenty-four.
Eight twenty-four. So I thought we could maybe go after both of you at the same time. Ed, you want to speak to this?
Yes, good evening. It does need to be referred to the Planning Commission for an eight-twenty-four review, so that way we could see what they come up before it even gets approved at that point. In the meantime, as the mayor stated, we did get a letter that was read at the last park board meeting about the owner wishing to sell the property in the park board. I looked at it and thought it would have been a good idea to maybe explore that and hopefully expand on what we have at Muzzy. We would have probably some parking there. I did a little preliminary design. We could probably get thirty-five to forty spaces in there, but it also would open up the gateway.
Yep, I got that one, yep.
It would also open up the gateway in terms of I would have now the corner lot on Donovan Avenue in Park, and also the corner lot of Muzzy Street in Park. So it would lead into what we want to do in terms of the facility that we have there. But it is important that the Planning Commission, which they do meet, I think, next month, either twenty-second or twenty-third, somewhere in there, before Thanksgiving, that this referral goes to them, and that will definitely give them a little bit more insight on what we're trying to do, so that way it moves along. But that shouldn't hinder, if you give permission for the mayor to negotiate something, that shouldn't stop that process.
Let me also, we already, Glenn just left. Already, we did talk with Glenn about how we're going to fund this, and Ed, we have ninety thousand dollars put in our budget through CDPG money for demolition, so it wouldn't be a city cross demolition of the building. And the purchase, we're working with Glenn, so it would really be not that big of a hit, if any, because there was other ways that we talked about throughout that we were going to purchase this property, and we won't get into that right now. But I think it's definitely worth negotiating. We did a beautiful front skate of the Memorial, of the Muzzy Field, and we need parking there. How many spaces did you estimate you could get there?
Thirty-eight. I can get about forty with a couple handicap spots in there, too, so.
And again, this is a business that's closed, not a business that we're closing, so keep that in mind. And the owner did come to the city to look for us to purchase it, so we didn't, you know, he gave to us, so I just want to make that clear.
Ed, do you have any idea what the cost of that?
You know, I think Thomas Denault might have looked at that one time, but I'm not really feeling viable place, you know, you could be talking maybe four hundred, five hundred thousand, but if it's turnkey, ready to go, I think it definitely needs some work in the facility, so that'll be up to.
The number we have was just continually more than that. I don't want to get into the numbers because that would be there in the negotiation. Any other discussion?
Hey, at this point, I'm not sure I'm in support of this. It's a, for thirty to thirty-five parking places, I think what's been done with the renovation for the parks already has recentered the entrance of Muzzy, so you now have almost a crescent-shaped parking situation, which has made it much more accessible. You can park on the far side where the skate park is and simply walk to the front, as opposed to what used to be a more contiguous walk. It's, you know, it's kind of, I'm looking at it, too, from the tax roll standpoint. I'm not sure that there isn't another opportunity for that building to have a new life, and its role in that neighborhood and its role in conjunction with the events at Muzzy Field. I'm just a little leery right now about moving toward a sale and a demolition without knowing that there's been no interest on the private market for someone else to go in there and renovate and restore, clean up, and improve that corner.
Any other discussion?
Another discussion? Yeah, I just wanted to say that maybe a good idea to send this to Real Estate Committee. If we have to have a special meeting for city council on a matter like this, we can always do it. We may have other special meetings concerning some other issues before, so we may all fit this in in a timely manner. But I think that this is, you know, we can send it out for the eight-twenty-four review and all that.
Can we have a motion to send it to for the eight-twenty-four review as well as send it to Real Estate?
If any. I'd like to make that motion. We send this to, for our eight-twenty-four review through Planning and through the Real Estate Committee, and we visit it if it comes back here, or if it comes back here. We should also send this through. That's all we can worry about.
That's most of it. So that's a motion, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
We can go to Real Estate, but I don't think I'd be supporting it, even if they proved it came back here with it. I mean, we're talking four hundred thousand dollars.
We're not talking four hundred thousand dollars.
Forty parking spaces, that's ten thousand dollars a parking spot, plus we haven't even done any construction, plus we're taking it off the tax rolls. I think that belongs in the private sector and not city property.
Just for information, because I know Steve is going to write the story, we're not talking four hundred thousand dollars, we're not talking three hundred thousand dollars. One more thing, I just wanted to make that clear.
Have one more item to it. Was there a question about switching some utilities over?
That's a possibility, too, because we do have some utilities that are around the west side of Muzzy Street.
You currently have two services serving Muzzy Field, four hundred amps apiece or something like that.
Yeah, we have one on the old side of the street. We definitely split it, and there's two telephone poles with three or four pods on them that are on the west side of Muzzy Street.
Right.
And we did talk to power company to see if we could relocate those, knowing that there's other properties there, which is really hard to do. So that is a possibility that we would, it would definitely clean that up, but, you know, I think the main purpose was just to try to.
The power company would appreciate you to have a pad on their transformer on the ground rather than.
That's in the next phase, that we will do that, but I want to eliminate the poles on the street.
Gets rid of one problem.
Any other discussion on this?
So the motion is to send it to Real Estate, Planning and Zoning. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
One no. Motion passes. Thank you, Ed. Item number eleven.
To authorize the tax collector, Deputy Tax Collector, Corporation Council, Assistant Corporation Council, Mayor or Acting Mayor to bid at foreclosure sale for the following three properties, eight oh one Burlington Avenue, assessors map fifty-nine, fifty Ebert Drive, unit sixty-eight, assessors map five, and fifty Terryville Avenue, assessors map twenty-two.
Motion to re. So we're here to read it. I got it. I hereby move to authorize the tax collector or deputy tax collector and/or Corporation Council or Assistant Corporation Council and/or Mayor or Acting Mayor to bid at the foreclosure sale for property on assessors map five, fifty Ebert Drive, unit number sixty-eight, Bristol, Connecticut, and that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary funding.
Another second. Made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. I have twelve.
There's actually two more motions for each street. There's one, the next one is for fifty Ebert Street. There should be two more.
So we have no motion under item number eleven.
I hereby move to authorize the tax collector or deputy tax collector and/or Corporation Council or Assistant Corporation Council and/or Mayor or Acting Mayor to bid at the foreclosure sale for property on assessors map five, fifty Ebert Drive, unit number sixty-eight, Bristol, Connecticut, and that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary funding.
Second.
Made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Do we have one more?
Got it. I hereby move to authorize the tax collector or deputy tax collector and/or Corporation Council. Council or Assistant Corporation Council and/or Mayor or Acting Mayor to bid on foreclosure sale of property on Scissors Map 20, 50 Terryville Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut. And that this matter, we refer to the Board of Finance for any necessary funding.
Second. Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 12.
Resolution authorizing Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute all documents regarding the sale of a portion of lot number 11, Southeast Bristol Business Park to JLB Investments LLC, holding company of CMI Specialty Products Inc., and there is a resolution to read.
And I can read that. Mayor, be it hereby resolved that Mayor Kenneth B. Cokane or Acting Mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents associated with the sale of a portion of lot number 11 of the Southeast Bristol Business Park to JLB Investments LLC, holding company of CMI Specialty Products, Inc., to accommodate a building expansion.
Second. Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. Resolution, my star left, huh, starting from my far left.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Chair votes yes, motion passes. Resolution passes. Item 13.
Resolution regarding approval to sign agreement with Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority for a lightbulb exchange event at the Bristol Home Show in February 2015. The authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute, there is a resolution to read.
I can read that. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to approve the signing of an agreement with the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority to extend the Clean Energy Grant on a lightbulb exchange event that will be held at the Bristol Home Show in February 2015, authorize the Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any and all documents associated with the grant, and to refer the matter to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second. Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. Resolution, starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Yes. Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item 14.
Word of contract, 2P1527, professional services, analysis of school rent and news programs to the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood for $20,000. No authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents and referrals to Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second. Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item 15.
And that's the consent calendar, and there are seven items. 15A is to place on file a new hire report for October 2014. 15B is the approval of tax refunds dated November 4, 2014. 15C is ordinance committee to adopt an amendment to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 2.5-7 pertaining to false alarm penalties. Item 15D is the ordinance committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 12-135 subsection C pertaining to code enforcement penalties. Item 15E is the ordinance committee to adopt amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-55 subsection A pertaining to code enforcement committee membership. Item 15F is the ordinance committee to adopt an amendment to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-19 subsection F pertaining to fees for new construction. And item 15G is the ordinance committee to introduce amendments to the Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 18-115 through 18-118 pertaining to the Regional Planning Agency.
We need to put item G separately. Item G is taken out, and can we have a motion to approve item A through F?
Some of.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item G.
Okay, item G. In accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move, per reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances being introduced to this state pertaining to Article 8, Section 18-115 through 18-118 of the Regional Planning Agency Code be waived.
Second. Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Okay. In accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move at the time and place of Wednesday, November 19, 2014, at 4:15 p.m., in the first floor meeting room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee, and let the city clerk publish notice of set public hearing of the proposed amendments to the Code of